Dear Heavenly Father, we thank you for this day and all the blessings it has to offer us individually and collectively as a city. Father bless the City of Norfolk, every citizen who resides within its boundaries, and every city employee who works to make our city great. Bless our mayor, each member of our council, and our city manager, as we attempt to govern with fairness and guide this city through challenging times. Allow us to be tender with the young, compassionate with the aged, sympathetic with the striving, and tolerant of the weak and of the strong. Father bless those who are less fortunate during this time of year, and allow them to remember that you are the true reason for this season. This and all other blessings we ask in your son's name. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands.
One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. The clerk will please call the roll.
Mr. Burford?
Here.
Mr. Protogiru?
Here.
Mr. Riddick?
Here.
Mr. Smigiel?
Here.
Dr. Wibley?
Here.
Ms. Williams?
Here.
Mr. Frame?
Here. The motion is to excuse Mr. Win, please.
Mr. Burford?
Aye.
Mr. Protogiru?
Aye.
Mr. Riddick?
Aye.
Mr. Smigiel?
Aye.
Dr. Wibley?
Aye.
Ms. Williams?
Aye.
Mr. Frame?
The clerk will please read the resolution for the closed meeting.
A resolution certifying a closed meeting of the council of the City of Norfolk held in accordance with the provisions of the Virginia Freedom of Information Act adopted the resolution. Mr. Burford?
Aye.
Mr. Protogiru?
Aye.
Mr. Riddick?
Aye.
Mr. Smigiel?
Aye.
Dr. Wibley?
Aye.
Ms. Williams?
Aye.
Mr. Frame?
Aye. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to the Norfolk City Council chambers. We're glad to have you here. For your benefit, the process which we will follow for tonight's meeting, the first thing we're going to do is take up the public hearings, and we have a number of them tonight. There are fourteen of them, in fact. At the conclusion of the public hearings, we'll move to the consent agenda. There are two or three items, there are three items there, the council may vote on them, all in one vote, and then we'll move to the regular agenda. And there are twenty-six items there, and I think we're going to have, I know we'll have an add-on as well at the conclusion of the form, and all of these matters, we'll vote on them, and just the way they're numbered on the printed document. At the conclusion of the formal agenda, if any member of the public would like to address the city council on a non-agenda item, something that's not on our printed docket, you'll be given that opportunity. All you have to do is sign a slip of paper, which the clerk has made available in the rear of the, in the lobby outside the council chambers before the meeting began. Before we move to our formal agenda, though, we do have one very brief ceremonial matter. The city historian Peggy Halmic Phillips is here, I think. Are you here?
Thank you.
Oh, here Peggy, come on up if you will. Were you going to make a presentation of some calendars?
Mr. Jones.
With Mr. Jones, and Tom Jones, who is the president of the Norfolk Public Library Foundation Board, is with us as well. Thank you all for coming down.
Thank you so much. We have presents for all of you all, as a way of saying thank you for your support of Norfolk Public Library, and all of our users, all throughout the year.
This is also a fundraiser for the foundation.
And it's also a fundraiser, to raise money for our local history collection.
Right.
For our new library, the Silver, the foundations took this matter on several years ago, and has been very well received by the public, and by everyone that I know. What we'd like to do is thank you for your support of the new library, and for things you've done for Fretlow and all our branches. Libraries are getting more use than ever, and we do thank you for that, but again, we encourage you, enjoy the calendars, if you need more, we can certainly provide them with.
Christmas gifts, too, right?
Wonderful Christmas gift. All your friends and family love them, Santa has said he's going to make a special trip with them this year, so.
Okay, great. All right. Thank you. Thank you for bringing them down, you appreciate it.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll move directly then to public hearing number one, please.
Public hearing one scheduled for this day pursuant to action of council on November 22, 2011, under state law, public notice having been inserted in the local press by the city clerk to hear comments on the conveyance of a gem lot to William C. and Elizabeth F. Mourning, property located at 802 Thayer Street.
There are no members of the public signed up to address the council on this matter, so you can call the roll.
We have ordinance authorizing the conveyance to William C. and Elizabeth F. Mourning of a certain parcel of property acquired by the city pursuant to Code of Virginia 1950 as amended, and approving the terms and conditions of the conveyance agreement, dispense with the charter requirement, free the ordinance and adopt. Mr. Burford?
Aye.
Mr. Protogiru?
Aye.
Mr. Riddick?
Aye.
Mr. Smigiel?
Aye.
Dr. Wibley?
Aye.
Ms. Williams?
Aye.
Mr. Frame?
Aye. Public hearing three.
Public hearing three scheduled for this day pursuant to action of council on November 22, 2011, public notice having been inserted in the press by the city clerk to hear comments on the conveyance of a gem lot to Ronald Holloway on property located at 2511 Middle Avenue. And the ordinance-
Go ahead.
The ordinance authorizes the conveyance to Ronald Holloway of a certain parcel of property acquired by the city, and approving the terms and conditions of the conveyance agreement, dispense with the charter requirement, free the ordinance and adopt. Mr. Burford?
Aye.
Mr. Protogiru?
Aye.
Mr. Riddick?
Aye.
Mr. Smigiel?
Aye.
Dr. Wibley?
Aye.
Ms. Williams?
Aye.
Mr. Frame?
Aye. Public hearing four.
Public hearing four is to hear comments on the conveyance of a gem lot to Plumline Ministries, Inc., on property located at 732 Reservoir Avenue.
And Mr. Brown, George Brown, is here to answer any questions, if there are any. I take it on behalf of Plumline. No questions, so you can call the roll.
And the ordinance authorizes the sale to Plumline Ministry of property described as the east side of Reservoir Avenue, for the sum of $13,000, and approving the terms and condition of the purchase and sale agreements, with the charter requirement, free the ordinance and adopt. Mr. Burford?
Aye.
Mr. Protogiru?
Aye.
Mr. Riddick?
Aye.
Mr. Smigiel?
Aye.
Dr. Wibley?
Aye.
Ms. Williams?
Aye.
Mr. Frame?
Aye. Public hearing five.
Public hearing five is to hear comments on the conveyance of a gem lot to Patricia A. Parker, on property located at 611 Reservoir Avenue.
Mr. Hodges is here to answer, Ronnie Hodges is here to answer any questions? Okay, no questions, you can call the roll.
And the ordinance authorizes the conveyance to Patricia A. Parker of a parcel of property acquired by the city, and approving the terms and conditions of the conveyance agreement, dispense with the charter requirement, free the ordinance and adopt. Mr. Burford?
Aye.
Mr. Protogiru?
Aye.
Mr. Riddick?
Aye.
Mr. Smigiel?
Aye.
Dr. Wibley?
Aye.
Ms. Williams?
Aye.
Mr. Frame?
Aye. Public hearing seven.
Public hearing seven scheduled for this day, to hear comments on the conveyance of various parcels of land in the Lammert's Point area to Old Dominion University.
Okay, no member of the public signed up to address the council on this matter, so you can call the roll.
And the ordinance authorizes the conveyance of various parcels in Lammert's Point area to Old Dominion University, dispense with the charter requirement, free the ordinance and adopt. Mr. Burford?
Aye.
Mr. Protogiru?
Aye.
Mr. Riddick?
Aye.
Mr. Smigiel?
Aye.
Dr. Wibley?
Aye.
Ms. Williams?
Aye.
Mr. Frame?
Aye. Public hearing eight.
Hearing eight scheduled for this day, on the application of Eastern Virginia Medical School for the closing, vacating, and discontinuing of a portion of West Alney Road, north of Fairfax Avenue, by 7-0 vote, planning commission recommends approval.
Mr. Scott Chuni is here, on behalf of the medical school, to answer any questions, if we have any. Okay, you can call the roll.
We have an ordinance closing, vacating, and discontinuing a portion of West Alney Road, and authorizing the conveyance of any interest the city may have in the underlying fee of said portion of West Alney Road, dispense with the charter requirement, free the ordinance and adopt. Mr. Burford?
Aye.
Mr. Protogiru?
Aye.
Mr. Riddick?
Aye.
Mr. Smigiel?
Aye.
Dr. Wibley?
Aye.
Ms. Williams?
Aye.
Mr. Frame?
Aye. Public hearing nine.
Public hearing nine scheduled for this day, on the application of GPMC properties for change of zoning from R-8-1 family to conditional R-9-1 family on property located at 29 Selden Avenue.
Can I ask a question? Break, I'm sorry. I didn't know whether, what is the conditional R-9? Frank, R-8 to conditional R-9, what's the major difference?
This is very typical when we have a particular lot that is located in a neighborhood where the overwhelming majority of the lots are zoned R-8. The R-9, in this case, would reflect that the typical lot in this area doesn't actually meet the R-8 requirements, it meets R-9 requirements, but-
Is it larger?
The lot itself is larger, the R-9 would require, allow a smaller lot, which would allow it to be subdivided, and what we ask for, whenever we have one of these situations come up, we ask that the developer commit that the resulting house will be reviewed by the planning department, to ensure that it will fit into the character of the neighborhood. That's what the conditions are.
So, the lot is larger, so we're going to have two houses there?
You'll have the ability to do two single-family homes on the lot, yes.
What's the frontage of each house going to be?
I want to say that the frontage of this, they're going to be forty-five feet each, yes.
All right, thank you.
And by 7-0 vote, planning commission recommends approval. And the ordinance is to rezone property located at 1129 Selden Avenue from R-8 to conditional R-9, dispense with the charter requirement, free the ordinance and adopt. Mr. Burford?
Anthony.
Mr. Burford?
Ready?
Mr. Protogiru?
Aye.
Mr. Riddick?
Aye.
Mr. Smigiel?
Aye.
Dr. Wibley?
Aye.
Ms. Williams?
Aye.
Mr. Frame?
Aye. Public hearing ten.
Public hearing ten scheduled for this day pursuant to action of council, on the application of Robin Thomas to amend the general plan of Norfolk from industrial transportation utility to commercial office on property bounded by East 26th Street to the North Fawn Street to the east, East 25th Street and Church Street to the west, for change of zoning from I-1 limited industrial to C-2 corridor commercial on property located at 2500 Church Street and 2501 Fawn Street, and for special exception for mixed use on property located at 2501 Fawn Street, by 7-0 vote, planning commission recommends approval.
Are there no members of the public signed up to address the council on this matter? You can call the roll, please.
We have three ordinances. First is an ordinance to amend the general plan of Norfolk, so as to change the land use designation for properties bounded on the north by East 26th Street, on the east by Fawn Street, on the south by East 25th Street, and on the west by Church Street, from industrial transportation utility to commercial office, dispense with the charter requirement, free the ordinance and adopt. Mr. Burford?
Aye.
Mr. Protogiru?
Aye.
Mr. Riddick?
Aye.
Mr. Smigiel?
Aye.
Dr. Wibley?
Aye.
Ms. Williams?
Aye.
Mr. Frame?
Aye. Second is an ordinance to rezone property located at 2500 Church Street and 2501 Fawn
Street from I-1 to C-2, dispense with the charter requirement, free the ordinance and adopt. Mr. Burford?
Aye.
Mr. Protogiru?
Aye.
Mr. Riddick?
Aye.
Mr. Smigiel?
Aye.
Dr. Wibley?
Aye.
Ms. Williams?
Aye.
Mr. Frame?
Aye. Are we, public hearing eleven then, right?
Yes, sir. Public hearing eleven, scheduled for this day, on the application of the city for the closing, vacating, and discontinuing of the southernmost forty feet of St. Julian Avenue, from the western line of Maltby Avenue westwardly, to the center line of Barad Avenue, and for the closing, vacating, and discontinuing of the southernmost forty feet of St. Julian Avenue, from the eastern line of Maltby Avenue eastwardly, to the eastern line of North Brambleton, by 5-0 vote, planning commission recommends approval.
All right, again, there are no members of the public signed up to address this on this matter, so.
This is the piece that allowed it to go over.
I think so.
Right.
Right, public hearing eleven.
Yes, sir, this is the piece, it's the Maltby closure that I believe allows it to cross over the street. I'm sorry, the next one is salvage, yes, sir, this one would allow-
St. Julian and Barad, right?
Yes, sir, this does allow them to cross over. If you would look at the next-to-last page of your agenda item, it does show the area that is, would in fact be affected by the closure.
Okay, but this is not the warehouse.
This may well be the issue of where we have the warehouse expressed concern. I can tell you that the gentleman who expressed concern did express concern about both of these properties, actually, this is the, both these closures, actually, this is the one that would affect the warehouse access. I'm sorry.
Okay, so, does this mean that we've made the necessary arrangement for these trucks to not travel through the community?
I have not been involved in any of the issues, other than the actual street closure itself, so I cannot tell you what arrangements have been made.
Maybe he can answer that. Were you coming up to answer one of these questions? If not, somebody tell us, I mean, how, I mean, what kind of time crunch we're in, if we can defer this to the 10th, so we can get these answers.
You can.
We had, we had a temporarily, well, I've asked months ago to be able to put up detour signs, put the proper signs in place, so these trucks will not be going through a residential community. And so, all I'm asking today, is that you knew this was coming before this body, have we taken the necessary precautions to ensure the safety and welfare of those families that live in that community, to ensure that their safety is where taken care of? I understand that. Did anyone speak with the company to ensure, to let them know that they cannot drive eighteen-wheelers through a residential neighborhood?
Why don't we continue the matter, let's continue the matter to the 10th, since there's not a time crunch here, but, you know, this comes back to what we talked about earlier. I mean, this is, this just comes to us on such a piecemeal fashion now, Mr. Manager, I mean, there's got to be somebody to grab this thing by the throat and deal with every one of these issues, you know, so. All right, we're going to move to continue this matter until the 10th of January, next meeting, all right? But all right, Mr. Burford? Okay.
Mr. Burford?
Aye.
Mr. Protogiru?
Aye.
Mr. Riddick?
Aye.
Mr. Smigiel?
Aye.
Dr. Wibley?
Aye.
Ms. Williams?
Aye.
Mr. Frame?
Aye. Public hearing twelve, please.
Public hearing twelve is on the application of the city for the closing, vacating, and discontinuing of a portion of Salvage Street, on the northern line of parcel D-3 southwardly to its terminus at the relocated Holt Street, and the HRT light rail northwardly approximately 750 feet, planning commission approved, 5-0.
All right, you can call the roll, please.
Ordinance, an ordinance closing, vacating, and discontinuing a portion of Salvage Street, and authorizing the conveyance to Norfolk Southern Railway Company, of any interest the city may have in the underlying fee of said portion of Salvage Street, dispense with the charter requirement, free the ordinance and adopt. Mr. Burford?
Aye.
Mr. Protogiru?
Aye.
Mr. Riddick?
Aye.
Mr. Smigiel?
Aye.
Dr. Wibley?
Aye.
Ms. Williams?
Aye.
Mr. Frame?
Aye. Public hearing thirteen, please.
Public hearing thirteen is to hear comments to consider changing the voting place of the Crossroads Precinct, from the Crossroads Recreation Center to the Crossroads Elementary School, and change the voting place of the Stewart Precinct, from Stewart Gifted Center to the Administration Building of the Virginia Zoo.
Ellis James?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, my name is Ellis W. James, I reside at 2021 Kenlake Place, here in the City of Norfolk, and I want to raise an issue, just so that my good city manager will be fully aware of the fact that citizens do come and go on the record on a number of these issues. This is going to be a very difficult and busy election year in 2012, and this action, which I fully support, that the registrar's office is asking you for, I view it as the first step in a process of trying to deal with what we're confronted with next year. The public will benefit from the change in these polling places, possibly in the upcoming presidential primary races. They will be able to familiarize themselves with the fact that there are changes potentially taking place. This council has just, in the informal session, heard an extremely important presentation from the registrar's office, on the potential consolidation recommendations for certain precincts, to make more equipment available. And so, I think it's extremely important that we try to take every step possible to avoid the kinds of situations that we did have in 2008. I don't mean that our folks who went to the polls in Norfolk were not willing to be patient, and to stick it out, and to cast their ballots, they did, heroically, and I can say that. I'm a precinct captain in Baron Black, I had a lady eighty-six years old who stood in the line, in the storm, and the rain, and the cold that was coming down, for a long time. She was determined to vote, it was her first time. I don't think we, as a community and a city, want to experience those kinds of lines again, if we can avoid it legally, and in a common sense fashion. I do support this particular first step, and I hope that the council will seriously pay attention to the issues of now before you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Ellis. David Claflin?
Thank you. My name is David Claflin, I live at 4801 Colonial Avenue, I'm the Stewart Voting Precinct Chief for Colonial Place in Riverview. I've been in touch with Dr. Wibley and Mr. Win via email, about the problems at the old Stewart building. I've received their assurances that they understand the problems. Stewart is an abandoned building, or slated for demolition. It's been broken in-
No, no.
-too repeatedly.
No, no, no.
Okay, you were doing fine till you said that. We agree with you, okay?
Yeah.
Well, it's, it's been broken in repeatedly, required by vagrants, who have set fires inside, who have graffitied up the walls, and ripped out the plumbing. This means that our poll workers, most of whom are elderly women, are asked to work a sixteen-hour day, from 5:00 a.m. till 9:00 p.m., until the voting records are closed out, with no inboard plumbing or running water. So, I don't think I really need to stand up here and argue the need to move Stewart. I think we agree on that, the question is whether or not the zoo is the most logical place. I would like to make the point, in my opinion, the zoo is the most logical place, with adequate parking, than any other single institution in the Colonial Place or Riverview neighborhoods. In my thirty years as a homeowner in Norfolk, I've paid over $110,000 in real estate taxes, some of which has gone to support the zoo. I think that's a good thing. We, the citizens of Norfolk, need to support our zoo, but the zoo has an obligation to its citizens, and that is, on Election Day, to support our democratic process. I went through a rather difficult election cycle with my voting team, I want to publicly thank the Office of Elections for the support that they gave me and my team, and I would encourage all of you to vote in favor of this resolution. Thank you for your time.
Thank you for coming down, we appreciate that. Okay, that concludes the list of folks who signed up to address the council on public hearing thirteen, so you can call the roll, please.
Mr. Mayor, just real quickly, I know somebody brought up concerns about field trips, going to the zoo. Schools are closed on Election Day, so there will be no field trips going to the zoo-
Yeah, and I don't, you know-
... November 8. I know, I'm just telling.
I agree with you, okay.
An ordinance to amend and reordain Section 14.1-88 and 14.1-96 of the Norfolk City Code 1979, so as to change the location of the voting places for the Stewart Precinct and the Crossroads Precinct, until December 31, 2012, dispense with the charter requirement, free the ordinance and adopt. Mr. Burford?
Aye.
Mr. Protogiru?
Aye.
Mr. Riddick?
Aye.
Mr. Smigiel?
Aye.
Dr. Wibley?
Aye.
Ms. Williams?
Aye.
Mr. Frame?
Aye. Public hearing fourteen, please.
Public hearing fourteen is on the application of the City Planning Commission to amend the zoning ordinance of the city on a text amendment to add a development certificate provision, and to allow gasoline stations, sales only by special exception, in the Broad Creek Gateway Overlay District, and by 4-0 vote, planning commission recommends approval of the text amendment.
All right, there's, no one here to address the council on this matter. If there are no questions, you can call the roll, please.
We have an ordinance to amend Chapter 27 of the zoning ordinance of the City of Norfolk 1992, so as to include gas stations, sales only by special exception, in the Broad Creek Overlay District, and to create a development certificate process for the BCGO District, dispense with the charter requirement, free the ordinance and adopt. Mr. Burford?
Aye.
Mr. Protogiru?
Aye.
Mr. Riddick?
Aye.
Mr. Smigiel?
Aye.
Dr. Wibley?
Aye.
Ms. Williams?
Aye.
Mr. Frame?
Aye. All right, the consent agenda, there are three items on the consent agenda. Would any member of the council like to have any of these matters, any one of these matters considered separately? Nope, you can call the roll, please.
Through the consent agenda, Mr. Burford?
Aye.
Mr. Protogiru?
Aye.
Mr. Riddick?
Aye.
Mr. Smigiel?
Aye.
Dr. Wibley?
Aye.
Ms. Williams?
Aye.
Mr. Frame? Mr. Frame?
Okay, the motion is to continue this matter generally.
Yes, sir.
I know there are a couple of folks who have signed up to address the council on this matter. Melanie Byrd, are you here? Okay, and Meredith Lauter? Okay, there are, the folks who are concerned about this matter, let me put it that way, are having good discussions. And so, we're going to consider them, continue the matter generally, so we can see if we can, can resolve this without a lot of conflict.
I think that groups are actually coming to a consensus, and they feel very comfortable with the solution as we're going to work toward it, but until they have a chance to work and to meet with Frank.
Dr. Whibley is the eternal optimist, too, I will say that.
It's going to be good.
Okay, so we're going to continue the matter generally, all right? Thank you.
Mr. Burford?
Aye.
Mr. Protogira?
Aye.
Mr. Riddick?
Aye.
Mr. Smigel?
Aye.
Dr. Whibley?
Aye.
Ms. Williams?
Aye.
Mr. Frame?
Aye, thank you very much.
R-two, please.
President, R-two was a public hearing that was passed by on November twenty-two and continued to tonight on the application of the Planning Commission to amend the zoning ordinance to eliminate requirements for a certificate of appropriateness for demolition when public safety is involved and improvements that are not visible from the public right-of-way except for alleys.
Okay.
And I had the ordinance.
All right.
And it's captioned an ordinance to amend and reordain sections nine dash zero point four and nine dash zero point six of the zoning ordinance of the city of Norfolk nineteen ninety-two in order to eliminate the requirement of a certificate of appropriateness when public safety requires demolition and when external alterations are not visible from any public right-of-way other than an alley. Dispense with the charter requirement, reading the ordinance, and adopt. Mr. Burford?
Aye.
Mr. Protogira?
Aye.
Mr. Riddick?
Aye.
Mr. Smigel?
Aye.
Dr. Whibley?
Aye.
Ms. Williams?
Aye.
Mr. Frame?
Aye.
R-three, please.
An ordinance accepting with appreciation the donation of one million dollars to the city from the Virginia Zoological Society and appropriating and authorizing the expenditure of the funds to contribute to construction of the Virginia Zoo Animal Wellness Campus with a zoo hospital and animal diet kitchen facility.
Mr. Manager, you want to comment on this?
Well, we've...
On the million dollars back to the city?
Yep. Mayor, this is the, the million back to the city. We did that beforehand.
Okay.
This is basically the, we had already approved that.
All right, okay. Good enough, all right, call the roll then, all right.
Dispense with the charter requirement, reading the ordinance, and adopt. Mr. Burford?
Aye.
Mr. Protogira?
Aye.
Mr. Riddick?
Aye.
Mr. Smigel?
Aye.
Dr. Whibley?
Aye.
Ms. Williams?
Aye.
Mr. Frame?
Aye.
R-five, please.
An ordinance approving a revised agreement between the Commonwealth of Virginia Department of Transportation and the city relating to the Princess Anne Road at Sewell's Point Road Project and authorizing the additional expenditures of the sum of three thousand one hundred and sixty-four dollars and fifty-five cents from funds heretofore appropriated in the capital improvement project budget to cover the city's additional share of the costs related to the project. Dispense with the charter requirement, reading the ordinance, and adopt. Mr. Burford?
Aye.
Mr. Protogira?
Aye.
Mr. Riddick?
Aye.
Mr. Smigel?
Aye.
Dr. Whibley?
Aye.
Ms. Williams?
Aye.
Mr. Frame?
Aye.
R-five.
An ordinance approving a revised agreement between the Commonwealth of Virginia Department of Transportation and the city relating to the Princess Anne Road at Sewell's Point Road Project and authorizing the additional expenditures of the sum of three thousand one hundred and sixty-four dollars and fifty-five cents from funds heretofore appropriated in the capital improvement project budget to cover the city's additional share of the costs related to the project. Dispense with the charter requirement, reading the ordinance, and adopt. Mr. Burford?
Aye.
Mr. Protogira?
Aye.
Mr. Riddick?
Aye.
Mr. Smigel?
Aye.
Dr. Whibley?
Aye.
Ms. Williams?
Aye.
Mr. Frame?
Aye.
R-six, please.
An ordinance granting a special exception to operate an entertainment establishment on property located at two hundred East Plume Street, and by a six-zero vote, Planning Commission recommends approval.
Mr. Falk is the applicant and is here to answer questions if we have any. All right, call the roll.
Dispense with the charter requirement, reading the ordinance, and adopt. Mr. Burford?
Aye.
Mr. Protogira?
Aye.
Mr. Riddick?
Aye.
Mr. Smigel?
Aye.
Dr. Whibley?
Aye.
Ms. Williams?
Aye.
Mr. Frame?
Aye.
R-six, please.
An ordinance granting a special exception to operate an entertainment establishment on property located at two hundred East Plume Street, and by a six-zero vote, Planning Commission recommends approval.
Mr. Falk is the applicant and is here to answer questions if we have any. All right, call the roll.
Dispense with the charter requirement, reading the ordinance, and adopt. Mr. Burford?
Aye.
Mr. Protogira?
Aye.
Mr. Riddick?
Aye.
Mr. Smigel?
Aye.
Dr. Whibley?
Aye.
Ms. Williams?
Aye.
Mr. Frame?
Aye.
R-seven.
An ordinance approving a right-of-entry agreement with Eastern Virginia Medical School. Dispense with the charter requirement, reading the ordinance, and adopt. Mr. Burford?
Aye.
Mr. Protogira?
Aye.
Mr. Riddick?
Aye.
Mr. Smigel?
Aye.
Dr. Whibley?
Aye.
Ms. Williams?
Aye.
Mr. Frame?
Aye.
R-nine.
An ordinance to amend City Code section two dash one eighteen, paragraph C, to change the name of the Division of Office of Homelessness to the Division of the Office to End Homelessness. Dispense with the charter requirement, reading the ordinance, and adopt. Mr. Burford?
Aye.
Mr. Protogira?
Aye.
Mr. Riddick?
Aye.
Mr. Smigel?
Aye.
Dr. Whibley?
Aye.
Ms. Williams?
Aye.
Mr. Frame?
Aye.
R-nine.
An ordinance to amend City Code section two dash one eighteen, paragraph C, to change the name of the Division of Office of Homelessness to the Division of the Office to End Homelessness. Dispense with the charter requirement, reading the ordinance, and adopt. Mr. Burford?
Aye.
Mr. Protogira?
Aye.
Mr. Riddick?
Aye.
Mr. Smigel?
Aye.
Dr. Whibley?
Aye.
Ms. Williams?
Aye.
Mr. Frame?
Aye.
R-nine.
An ordinance to amend City Code section two dash one eighteen, paragraph C, to change the name of the Division of Office of Homelessness to the Division of the Office to End Homelessness. Dispense with the charter requirement, reading the ordinance, and adopt. Mr. Burford?
Aye.
Mr. Protogira?
Aye.
Mr. Riddick?
Aye.
Mr. Smigel?
Aye.
Dr. Whibley?
Aye.
Ms. Williams?
Aye.
Mr. Frame?
Is that really what we're doing?
Did that change? Anyway, this, this reads a little backwards to me, but if, if it's the right, Mr. Attorney, I thought...
This is correct. It merely is the name changed so that they've begun using the name Division of the Office to End.
Right.
So that in the code, we have them as was previously stated, so that...
Right.
...will make the code consistent with what they use.
Okay, great, I'm for that. All right. Aye. Okay. R-ten.
An ordinance approving a non-exclusive franchise agreement with the city of Virginia Beach to install, operate, and maintain a sanitary sewer system in the rice of way in the city of Norfolk along Wesley and Dry. Dispense with the charter requirement, reading the ordinance, and adopt. Mr. Burford?
Aye.
Mr. Protogira?
Aye.
Mr. Riddick?
Aye.
Mr. Smigel?
Aye.
Dr. Whibley?
Aye.
Ms. Williams?
Aye.
Mr. Frame?
Aye.
R-eleven.
An ordinance granting a downtown development certificate to permit construction of a consolidated courthouse complex on property located at one fifty to one sixty St. Paul's Boulevard. Dispense with the charter requirement, reading the ordinance, and adopt. Mr. Burford?
Aye.
Mr. Protogira?
Aye.
Mr. Riddick?
Aye.
Mr. Smigel?
Aye.
Dr. Whibley?
Aye.
Ms. Williams?
Aye.
Mr. Frame?
Aye.
R-twelve.
An ordinance to amend and reordain sections one and two of the capital improvement plan budget for the fiscal year July one, twenty-eleven, so as to increase the funding for a project entitled rehabilitation of the MacArthur Center garages in an amount not to exceed three hundred thousand dollars and to authorize the expenditure of said amount in cash from the parking facilities funds, MacArthur Center New Garage Reserve Fund. Dispense with the charter requirement, reading the ordinance, and adopt. Mr. Burford?
Aye.
Mr. Protogira?
Aye.
Mr. Riddick?
Aye.
Mr. Smigel?
Aye.
Dr. Whibley?
Aye.
Ms. Williams?
Aye.
Mr. Frame?
Aye.
R-thirteen.
An ordinance authorizing the purchase from Randy C. Stoker and Monica W. Stoker of certain property located in the city and commonly known as sixty-one sixty Rolfe Avenue for the sum of one hundred and fifty thousand dollars, approving the terms and conditions of the purchase and sale agreement and authorizing the expenditure of the sum of up to one hundred and seventy thousand dollars from funds heretofore appropriated to pay the purchase price and the other transaction costs. Dispense with the charter requirement, reading the ordinance, and adopt. Mr. Burford?
Aye.
Mr. Protogira?
Aye.
Mr. Riddick?
Aye.
Mr. Smigel?
Aye.
Dr. Whibley?
Aye.
Ms. Williams?
Aye.
Mr. Frame?
Aye.
R-fourteen.
An ordinance to amend and reordain subsection C of section thirty-seven dash seventy-four of the Norfolk City Code as amended to provide that persons who become members of the city employee retirement system on or after December thirteen, twenty-eleven, shall be required to meet the vesting requirement stated in subsection C of section thirty-seven dash seventy-four in order to be eligible to retire.
Just a second. Jane Bethel?
Good evening, Mayor Frame, Vice Mayor Burford, City Council members, and Mr. Jones. My name is Jane Bethel, and I live at fifty-six thirty-two Brandon Boulevard in Virginia Beach. I'm speaking tonight as the president of Nage Local Two Hundred. We support this ordinance that closes the loophole, allowing employees to reach age sixty and retire with any amount of service, even a day or two. That's obviously not a good idea. Most employees thought you had to have five years to be vested, no matter what the age, and with the new severance rules, it makes sense to have achieved at least five years with the city. The union wants to support the city, and we would like a harmonious relationship, but please, don't ignore what is really important to the employees now. Last May, Mr. Jones, you began making some positive strides, addressing the workplace bullying issue by saying Norfolk would not tolerate workplace bullying. This summer, employee expectations were published stating harassment in any form, including bullying, is unacceptable. In October, along with the mayors of Newport News and Portsmouth, Mayor Frame proclaimed October sixteenth to the twenty-second to be Freedom from Workplace Bullies Week in Norfolk, and the acting HR Director, Melanie Purcell, initiated mandatory training for all supervisors, including harassment training. And she began to address the workplace bullying issues. She accomplished much in her short time in Norfolk. These were all positive steps taken to tackle the workplace bullying problem. Thank you for taking those steps. Yet, the city is still tolerating bullying and protecting the bullies, and has not yet addressed many of the toxic work environments. With Melanie gone, I am concerned that we are back to sweeping these abuses under the rug. Melanie made a good impression on employees, and many have expressed to me that they didn't understand why she was let go. I have a suggestion. Get Melanie back and let her finish what she started. Let feathers be ruffled in the departments, because they need ruffling.
All right, thank you, okay. Call the roll, please.
Dispense with the charter requirement, reading the ordinance, and adopt. Mr. Burford?
Aye.
Mr. Protogira?
Aye.
Mr. Riddick?
Aye.
Mr. Smigel?
Aye.
Dr. Whibley?
Aye.
Ms. Williams?
Aye.
Mr. Frame?
Aye.
R-fifteen.
Pardon?
R-fifteen.
An ordinance accepting a grant in the sum of eight hundred and ninety-nine thousand two hundred and fifty dollars from the Virginia Department of Transportation and appropriating the grant funds for the enhancement of the Elizabeth River Trail. Dispense with the charter requirement, reading the ordinance, and adopt. Mr. Burford?
Aye.
Mr. Protogira?
Aye.
Mr. Riddick?
Aye.
Mr. Smigel?
Aye.
Dr. Whibley?
Aye.
Ms. Williams?
Aye.
Mr. Frame?
Aye.
R-sixteen.
An ordinance permitting Ben Washington trading as H&amp;W Builders and Construction to encroach into the right-of-way at Ship Avenue with a concrete driveway. Dispense with the charter requirement, reading the ordinance, and adopt. Mr. Burford?
Aye.
Mr. Protogira?
Aye.
Mr. Riddick?
Aye.
Mr. Smigel?
Aye.
Dr. Whibley?
Aye.
Ms. Williams?
Aye.
Mr. Frame?
Aye.
R-eighteen.
An ordinance to amend and reordain section twenty-five dash six forty-six of the Norfolk City Code so as to change the speed limit on Campustella Road in the Campustella Elementary School Zone. Dispense with the charter requirement, reading the ordinance, and adopt. Mr. Burford?
Aye.
Mr. Protogira?
Aye.
Mr. Riddick?
Aye.
Mr. Smigel?
Aye.
Dr. Whibley?
Aye.
Ms. Williams?
Aye.
Mr. Frame?
Aye.
R-eighteen.
An ordinance to amend and reordain section twenty-five dash six forty-six of the Norfolk City Code so as to change the speed limit on Campustella Road in the Campustella Elementary School Zone. Dispense with the charter requirement, reading the ordinance, and adopt. Mr. Burford?
Aye.
Mr. Protogira?
Aye.
Mr. Riddick?
I vote aye, and the community thanks you.
Mr. Smigel?
Aye.
Dr. Whibley?
Aye.
Ms. Williams?
Aye, and I'd get away with Mr. Riddick's vote.
Mr. Frame?
Aye.
R-nineteen.
An ordinance granting permission to Four-Eleven Granby LLC to encroach into the right-of-way at Four-Eleven Granby Street and approving the terms and conditions of the encroachment agreement. Dispense with the charter requirement, reading the ordinance, and adopt. Mr. Burford?
Aye.
Mr. Protogira?
Aye.
Mr. Riddick?
Aye.
Mr. Smigel?
Aye.
Dr. Whibley?
Aye.
Ms. Williams?
Aye.
Mr. Frame?
Aye.
R-twenty.
An ordinance granting an additional one-half day of holiday leave to all city employees on December twenty-three, twenty-eleven.
Jane, do you really want to? Can I just say you're a proponent?
I just wanted to say that Nage Local Two Hundred thanks you.
I'm sure.
The additional half-day off.
Okay, great, okay.
I think they give them a whole day.
Thank you, all right.
Do they get the twenty-sixth off, too?[1114.83]
Aye.
Mr. Smiggle?
Aye.
Dr. Whibley?
Aye.
Ms. Williams?
Aye.
Mr. Frame?
Aye.
R1.
An ordinance approving a release agreement with Norfolk Southern Railway Company relative to a portion of the property donated by Norfolk Southern Railway Company to the city for the Elizabeth River Trail and authorizing the city manager to execute the agreement on behalf of the city. Dispense with the charter requirement for reading the ordinance and adopt. Mr. Burford?
Aye.
Mr. Protogiro?
Aye.
Mr. Riddick?
Aye.
Mr. Smiggle?
Aye.
Dr. Whibley?
Aye.
Ms. Williams?
Aye.
Mr. Frame?
Aye.
R22.
An ordinance approving an agreement with, pardon me, with the Commonwealth of Virginia Department of Transportation for the design and construction of the Advanced Traffic Management System Phase 4 project and appropriating and authorizing the expenditure of funds for the project in the amount of $4,500,000 subject to it in accordance with the terms and conditions of the agreement. Dispense with the charter requirement for reading the ordinance and adopt. Mr. Burford?
Aye.
Mr. Protogiro?
Aye.
Mr. Riddick?
Aye.
Mr. Smiggle?
Aye.
Dr. Whibley?
Aye.
Ms. Williams?
Aye.
Mr. Frame?
Aye.
R24.
An ordinance approving the conveyance to the city of Norfolk by Norfolk Southern Railway